Four, three, two, and one.
Welcome to the Brisbane City Council Meeting of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. City Clerk, roll call please.
Madam Mayor, you wanna call the meeting to order?
Oh, call the meeting to order at seven thirty P M. Seven thirty-one.
And do the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, my gosh, I'm missing it. Pledge of allegiance, we'll start with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, roll call, please.
So, Madam Mayor, there are no requests to attend the meetings remotely. So we'll start with Councilmember Lentz.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham is absent.
Okay, so now we will move to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lentz.
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. We will now move to awards and presentations. Item B, San Mateo County Health Presentation on Preventing Fentanyl Overdoses. Hold on, we gotta turn your mic up a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor Davis and members of the council. Thank you for inviting us to come to present to you about the fentanyl crisis in San Mateo County. I am here this evening with two of my colleagues, Todd Henderson and Mark Ross. We're gonna take turns talking with you this evening, and we'll start off with Todd.
Good evening, I'm Todd Henderson. I'm an IMAT case manager for San Mateo County. And presentation tonight will be on the fentanyl crisis. So this is what we're gonna be talking about. We're gonna be talking about. Oh, that way. Excuse me, sorry.
There we go.
Okay, there we go. So we are gonna be discussing the basics about drugs, including fentanyl, the reason people use drugs, and the signs and symptoms of drug use, and then what you can do as a community to keep us safe as a community, prevention strategies and treatment options. So why do people use drugs? Basically, because changes the way we feel. Someone might use drug first to relieve stress or anxiety. They might have chronic pain. They might have some boredom and just want to use drugs. They might have a health condition that makes them use drugs. They might be depressed or sad. And a problem amongst teens would be peer pressure. Celebrities you see in the newspaper, friends using, everyone's doing it. And then, you know, somebody might have a trauma. They might have been afflicted by a rape or, you know, some traumatic event in their life. And basically because they work. So why are opioids prescribed? Primarily used for acute pain relief, including surgical care, the less common long-term unmanageable chronic pain, which is not recommended, suppression of diarrhea, opioid use disorder treatment, and suppressing cough. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Edith.
So the research is showing that there are specific drugs that are used most often in the community, and our specific interest in San Mateo County is among youth who should not have access to drugs. Alcohol is the number one substance used by youth. Second is cannabis. Third is tobacco, including and especially vaping. Over-the-counter medicines like cough syrup is also used by young people. And we might not know it, but some cough syrup formulations can be up to twenty-five percent alcohol. And we really recommend that parents take a look at the medicine that they're about to give their children. And MDMA or ecstasy is the fifth substance that's used most often by young people. Some of the signs of drug use you see here listed. Any one of these could happen to any one of us on any given day if we had a rough night or didn't get enough sleep or anything like that. What we want parents and people in the community to look for is when these types of symptoms last over a long period of time, and especially if there are multiple of these symptoms that you see in your child over a long period of time. These symptoms can represent different, the use of different drugs. But if you see them, it doesn't matter what the drug is, you should think about getting your child some help. So take a look at those, what those signs and symptoms are. Sometimes they look okay, sometimes they're not. Rather than think, oh, everything should be okay, start to ask questions. Some of the effects of substance use you see here, we are giving you the effects, the short-term effects and the long-term effects of alcohol, cannabis, and opioids specifically, because opioids are our most current crisis that we're having. But alcohol and cannabis being the most used in the community, we felt that you need to know what the short-term and the long-term impacts are. Because short-term, things might be okay, especially if you stop. But long-term, especially if you develop a dependence or an addiction, it can become a real problem.
Hi, my name is Mark. Mark Ross. I'm an IMAT case manager. I work in an emergency department, and we link folks to medication-assisted treatment for addiction. So opioids, opioids, there's a list above. Some of the most common ones you see are the hydrocodone, oxycodone, or codeine. You might get those at a dental visit. Fentanyl is one of the newer ones, and that's obviously the area of concern lately because it's so much more potent. And a lot of times you're finding fentanyl infiltrating other substances, or people don't even realize that they're taking an opioid drug, but they've got fentanyl in their system. But the goals of these medications are innocent enough. It's just usually used to reduce pain, but a lot of people find that they feel good and they produce euphoria. With the opioid use comes tolerance, and that's where problems start to occur, because you can take more and more to get the same effect. And then when you stop, you become ill, which results in behavior changes and all sorts of drug-seeking behaviors that can be problematic. We'll move on to the next one. So how do opioids work? So we have opioid receptors in our brain, and those usually would respond to, you know, if you have some sort of traumatic event where you're feeling pain. There's, you know, chemicals in your brain that calm you down a little bit, take the edge off. Well, the opiates do a little bit more than that. They're strong and they're fast and they're effective. So they alter the way people perceive pain. And while they're not painkillers, like a lot of people would say, they do relieve pain, and they're good at that. And so they also result in feelings of relaxation, elation, or you may even see people just completely sedated to where they're speaking really slowly, just nodding out. So some of the short-term effects, mood swings, slowed breathing is one to really look for. Clouded mental function, people are spaced out. You can have nausea as a result of taking the medication, or you can have nausea as a result of stopping taking the medication. People that do become addicted, that's something we really look for, is like vomiting, nausea. Sedation and drowsiness, probably the most two common things you would see with opioid use. And it does lower your body temperature, and if you do too much, you've got risk of the bottom two consequences, the chance of going into a coma, stopping breathing. So fentanyl is the most worrisome right now because it's such, as you can see, the penny and just the little tiny amount that it takes for a person to overdose. Now, some people do huge amounts of fentanyl, and the tricky part is you don't know the concentration, especially if it's mixed into another substance, or if it's a street drug that's not, you know, doled out by a pharmacy. It could be super strong, or it could be mild and easily tolerated. So again, it's great for pain. You know, people with severe pain from cancer, things like that, fentanyl is a godsend. But, you know, used inappropriately, it can be extremely dangerous and deadly. The most common forms you'll see around here are powders, but it does come in injectable form. Tasteless, odorless, colorless, just looks like a harmless little white powder. But what we've seen is that, you know, even ten dollars worth could be a fatal dose. And so, you know, ten dollars is pretty easy to come up with. And that's, I think that's probably what just makes it so scary.
So we feel that there are prevention measures that we can put into place to prevent drug-related deaths, especially, and including fentanyl deaths. And a lot of that is in primary prevention. A lot of these things that you will see shouldn't be rocket science. These are things that we recommend as children develop and as parents become parents that we recommend that they do in their household. What can youths do? They can develop strong relationship with their parents. They can create a friend group that they really trust. You really need to know who the people are that you're spending time with. Research shows that how well you do is very dependent on who you hang out with when you're an adolescent. You should learn clear and firm refusal skills, so that if somebody pressures you into using a substance that you don't feel like taking, you know how to say no, and that you can leave the situation if you feel unsafe in it. You want to be able to share your feelings with other people. Mental health is one of the challenges that our young people are going through right now. And part of it is they don't have anybody that they can talk with. They need to find people they trust that they can share their feelings with. We recommend that they find an adult that's not a parent, that they can trust, will support them, and be able to ask for help if it came to that. We also really recommend, because adolescent years are the years when young people are experimenting, it is part of adolescence to poke at their boundaries and try different things. We recommend that if you're gonna try a substance, never, never do it alone. Because being alone means you don't have help if you get into trouble. And we also need to educate yourself via trusted sources. We teach young people media literacy and be able to know what messages are being sent to you that might be targeting you and might be unhealthy for you. So know where you can find accurate information. For parents, we recommend that parents really work at accepting and supporting their children for who they are and not who they want the children to be. We hear about parents putting a whole lot of pressure on their children and thinking you should be like so-and-so, rather than just accepting their children as they are. You should communicate your expectations and your boundaries clearly and hold your children accountable. We're doing research right now with communities in San Mateo County, and it's one of the things that young people are saying. I was able to say no to drugs because I had boundaries. My parents were very clear with me about what they expected me to do. Parents don't always realize how much of an influence they are on their children. Really important to know that you are their number one teacher and their number one, probably, cheerleader and ally. You should know who your children's friends are. You should know who their friends, their friends' parents are. Sometimes it's not the friends, sometimes it's the environment that the friends are in. So the more you know about your child and their life, the better off you're gonna be as a parent, as they get older and they start to make decisions maybe without you. Really good to know where they are and with whom. Gets harder and harder as they get older. This is why we recommend that while they're still young, that you build those strong relationships with them. And you need to keep talking and listening to your children. Sometimes they don't look like they're listening. Sometimes they look like they're not interested in hearing what you have to say, but they are listening because they do repeat what you say and they do live by the things, whether for or against the things that you say, they do listen to you. Assure them that their feelings are natural. Some of the things that children say is that they don't feel that their parents accept them because when they say something, the parents will dismiss it. So we really recommend that parents really think, when you're an adolescent, there are things that happened that didn't happen before you're an adolescent, and these things are normal. Maybe read up on healthy adolescents and let your child know that what they're going through, everybody goes through, and they're okay. Also be there for your children. Sometimes they do things, sometimes they make mistakes. Really important that parents continue to be there for their children as they go through life, and while they are under a roof, let's give them as much of the support as we can possibly give them. Also know the signs and symptoms of possible mental health challenges and drug use, and seek help if needed. What can schools do? Lots of things that schools can do. Our children spend a whole lot of time in schools. Schools need to create a safe environment for learning. In addition to putting together an academically rigorous program, also consider that the physical, social, and emotional needs of children also need to be met during the school hours. If possible, facilitate having provision of services on campus. Some of the reasons why young people are not able to go to treatment is because they can't get to treatment. The more we have treatment, more readily available where they are during their day, the better off we're gonna be. If they have to take three buses to get to a treatment program, we might not be successful in getting them into treatment. We would like for schools to review their discipline policies and practices and take a look at how those practices might be affecting children from different groups differently. We are looking at the data from the schools, and we see that there are specific children who are getting more into trouble than other groups of children. And ensure that your school has naloxone, Narcan is a common name for that, and is prepared to address the overdose. Naloxone is available for free from the state of California, and there's online trainings on how to use them, and the health department is happy to come or have partners come to train you if needed. Those are links for where you can get information on how to get naloxone. What can people do at home? If you have to go to the doctor and need pain treatments, while opioids are an option for pain treatment, ask if there are non-opioid options first. Exception for this is when you're in the hospital and the doctor's taking care of you and you're in acute pain. Those medicines are okay because they're getting dispensed from a pharmacy. We recommend that you don't keep extra pills at home. Once your prescription is done, turn them in. There are drug take-pack programs that are part of police departments in other locations in the community. Also, please don't flush those medicines, extra medicines, or put them in the garbage. Also, increase your awareness about drugs and their impact. Prescription drugs can be dangerous. Opioids can lead to addiction, dependency. We need to put more resources into prevention and treatment programs, and we need to reduce the stigma for people to talk about drug use and mental health challenges. Somebody who is under the influence of drugs should not be stigmatized, and we should not be forgetting that they are still human. They're somebody's brother and sister, mother and father, and they are members of our family and our community. And we need to talk about these issues. Now that more and more of our children are suffering from mental health challenges, we really need to be looking at this as a community. And probably most important, don't buy drugs off the street or online. If you have a friend who's handing you a pill and tells you it's okay, unless you know where that pill came from, you have to assume that pill has fentanyl and that pill can kill you. One pill can kill. Oh, I didn't get help. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that last little piece, you know, a lot of people don't realize, I mean, I work in an emergency situation, and people come in for benzodiazepine addiction, so like Valium, Ativan, drugs like that. And it turns out that they test negative for benzodiazepines. So what they were addicted to is fentanyl, and they've been taking fake benzodiazepines for a long period of time. Any little pill, you just really, if you don't know where it came from, get rid of it. And get rid of your old prescriptions, because kids are rascally about getting into that, and they know what pills are. So harm reduction, that's the field that I work in. You know, there are a lot of examples, sunscreen, seatbelts, speed limits. They don't fix everything, but they reduce the harm associated with it. You could still die in a car crash, but most likely you're not going to because you're wearing your seatbelt. And with drugs, when you stop using drugs, or some people reduce using drugs, and we try to not stigmatize them. We try to affirm them making changes in their lives for the positive, even if it's not perfect. We wanna encourage them to make the effort. So people, instead of calling people drug addicts, we'll call them a person experiencing substance use disorder. With a mental illness, instead of saying this person is a schizophrenic, we'll say this is a person with schizophrenia. We really try to minimize the, people are scared to ask for help. And so if we judge them as soon as they come in, they're never gonna ask for help, and I think that's important with parents as well. Another important one, you know, sometimes parents will drug test their children, and, you know, if the test comes back positive, oh, you're dirty. We like to say, you know, the test is positive, you know, let's talk about next steps, because obviously you've been using. So really, we do a lot to try to, you only get a few chances to do interventions, and you don't wanna scare the person away. You really wanna have them be willing to talk to you and to ask for help. And so that's part of the reason we practice harm reduction with the clients. And so, yeah, here's a pop quiz. Which one of those, which one of those pills are, which are real and which are fake? Maybe just between the few. They all look pretty real. Only one of those pills is real. And that one is the Adderall, which I believe is in the, okay, yeah, with the little arrow. So, yeah, generally, it's really easy to press pills with a pill press. Fentanyl comes in a powder form. And so even a street-level dealer might have a pill press where they make pills. So if you find, if you find pills around the house, it's time to have the talk. So signs of an overdose. First, you know, you wanna check if the person's responsive, make sure that they're breathing. Let's see, yeah, go ahead. Thanks. So a lot of times what you're gonna see in an opioid overdose is somebody that's not rousable. They're leaning over, they're nodding over, they might have snoring sounds, snoring respiration, or they might not be breathing at all, and they might start turning blue. And this can happen pretty fast. So the first thing to do when you notice this is to call nine-one-one. You don't wanna leave them alone. You wanna call nine-one-one while you're with them, and then you wanna attempt some of the next efforts to help them.
Okay, so where do we get help? You can talk to your primary healthcare provider. Or if, for medical clients, you can connect with our access call center line, which is listed there, one eight hundred six eight six zero one zero one. And then the other choice is you can always call us at the E R IMAT support line, which is six five oh five seven three two seven three five. That phone is pretty much staffed from every day of the week, from seven in the morning till roughly nine o'clock at night, with the exception of weekends. And we really try to help, you know, in a nonjudgmental, caring, compassionate way. I think that's important to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's our presentation. Do you have questions?
We had a member of the public approach us about distributing Narcan. Do you have, and I don't know that we're the appropriate entity to do that, but do you have recommendations of maybe local nonprofits they might be able to partner with in that effort, maybe besides, obviously, yourself, but are there any other, like, harm reduction nonprofits in San Mateo County that you would suggest?
We do have treatment programs in different locations in San Mateo County, and they will have Narcan available. We are recommending that school districts have a policy that they want to see Narcan in every, at least, middle school and high school. And so that's something to look into, because we have a school in every community, probably within short distance of where we live. So we recommend that, and I am not sure whether or not that's the case in Brisbane.
Do you think that also, like, places like clubs, maybe like, we don't have any clubs in Brisbane, but maybe in San Francisco nightlife clubs or bars might be like a viable place to approach? If they want, you know, they might, it might be good for them to have Narcan on hand, too.
We actually are recommending that anybody who thinks they might come across somebody who might be, who could benefit from Narcan, have Narcan, and Narcan will be made available to them. We're recommending other groups, like even scout troops who are going all over the wilderness, who might come across people. But that's also an appropriate organization. Did you have another?
Sure.
Something to add?
Yeah, I mean, I keep Narcan in my car, in my glove box. I haven't had to use the emergency stash of Narcan, but, I mean, you just never know when you're gonna run into a situation where, you know, it's, 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 yeah, you just really never know who's gonna accidentally get ahold of something, or you can't tell by just looking at a person whether they do drugs or not, or whether they might be at risk, and so. But, yeah, we have it at the emergency department. That number for the IMAT team, if somebody calls us, we can usually provide a box or two, especially, you know, say if you find out your child is using, and, you know, you wanna be safe. The, they're working on putting vending machines in some public buildings, courthouses, things like that. We're really trying to get it distributed around because it's such a lifesaving drug that, you know, you just wanna be able to get your hands on it quickly.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, another resource that we have is the fentanyl test strips. And I do see those being passed out at bars and clubs. There's, sometimes you have to pay like fifty cents or something for your fentanyl test strips, but sometimes they just have a bucket. And what those are is a way to test your drugs, to find out if they have fentanyl in them. And it's interesting, because I thought those will never work, because you have to waste some of your drugs to to test them, because you have to put it in a little bit into some water, and then you dip the tester into the water like you would a urinalysis test. But I found that a lot of, a lot of folks really, you know, they don't wanna die. They wanna feel good. They really wanna feel good, but they don't wanna die, and so they use resources like that. And sometimes we even, we pass them out in homeless communities, and then we find that a lot of the folks, if we leave a business card, then those folks end up giving us a call. And so it's a way to say. card, then those folks end up giving us a call. And so it's a way to say, you know, we care. Like, we don't necessarily condone what's going on, but we, but we want you to be safe and we, and we care and you can trust us, you know?
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Some people might assume all first responders, because you've got fire, you've got police, you've got ambulances. Do they all now carry and are trained in the use of Narcan?
They do. They do. Yeah.
So that if, if someone sensed that a person they know or a person they come across is having an emergency, those are good resources.
Sure.
If they're handy to contact.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's really easy to use. A lot of people are worried about the Narcan. Oh, my God, if I give them a dose of this, is it going to hurt them? It doesn't hurt the person. It's a simple nasal spray and just one squirt in the nostril. If they don't respond, give them one in the other nostril. Boom, you know, hopefully they wake up.
If, if someone is a self-professed drug user, can they obtain Narcan because they're concerned about they're going to continue buying and using drugs and they don't want to be dependent on someone helping them if they're in an emergency?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we would love for them to call us. They can go to their nearest emergency room. There's, there's plenty of ways for them to get a hold. And we have, we have a handy box here, and it's, it's just a little nasal spray inside. And it looks just like you would use your, for a cold.
So what is the best place if someone wanted to obtain that? As I said, maybe they're a drug user. What is the best place for them to go to ask for it so they don't feel stigmatized? Is it a hospital? Is it? What are the places that this would be distributed? And they'll probably want to know, do I have to pay for it? Do I have to sign something? What's involved?
Right. To?
You can go to your health care provider and get it. You can go to a pharmacy and get it. They're going to want to check if your insurance covers it or not because it's quite pricey. The health department has a supply of them and we will hand them out. In fact, I brought three of these. There's two sprays in each box, and we have twenty five of these. Most people, when they take them, they'll take three or four. And I have instructions. I'll only give them to you if you'll take the instructions because it's simple, but yet you got to do it right. So, but I do have, I do have them.
Thank you.
I have some questions. So first of all, I just want to just thank you for coming to Brisbane and giving us the, the presentation was very comprehensive. You went through a lot of stuff, but it was really important that you, you know, covered all those different layers. You know, when, you know, you think of the opioid epidemic, it's been going on for a long time, right? It was before COVID, right? And then COVID took the spotlight. And now this, you know, this epidemic that is continuing is now back in, in, in the forefront. But, you know, it was like, oh, this is like an East Coast thing or a Midwest, Aurora, you know, but we've had people in our own town die. Right? And, you know, and we talked a lot about the stigma, right, and trying to, to reduce that. And, you know, you'd be surprised how many people watch our council meetings that, you know, on their own time, right? Not, not live, but they'll go back and they'll watch. And in what you've provided could really help people, right? You've provided the information, how they can get the, you know, the Narcan. You don't need any training, right? It's pretty simple directions. You just, you just spray it in there if, if, if you feel like you have it or an overdose, or you think someone else is. And the, you know, and if they don't have, if they're not having a fentanyl overdose, that's okay, right? There's no harm in that. You know, part of the, the, the reason for you being here today is, is because someone, you know, came to us as a council and said, hey, you know, we got to do better, right? We, we, we need to get the communication out there to our residents and, and let people really know that this is a problem. And it isn't just, you know, somewhere else. It's happening here. And so for you being here is great, you know, being able to get Narcan or Oxalyn, right? An Oxalyn, yeah.
A Loxone.
An Oxone, sorry. You know, into more people's hands is going to save lives.
Yes.
Right? And so when you and I spoke, you know, earlier, you talked about like perhaps going to different, you know, community events, right? And setting up a table and, and, you know, so we have a farmer's market. We have a community day in the park. You know, would you be willing to, to come to an event? Or like, if, say, maybe you partner with our school districts? I know that our school district is, is getting the Narcan in all the schools and, and trying to educate parents and, and the students. Is that something you think that maybe you might want to, to do in our community?
Absolutely, yeah. We have health department staff. We're limited in our, in our staffing, but we have community partners. We have organizations in the community that serve different regions of San Mateo County who are looking for opportunities to be able to do education and to be at community events to talk about alcohol and other drug issues.
All right, all right. Well, again, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to oral communications. Number one, is there a member of the public, okay, wishing to speak on item not on the agenda? Come on, Paul. Do two minutes?
Not three minutes. I thought we went to three minutes.
We went to three minutes. I'll give you three minutes.
Thanks.
Please keep it to three.
Paul Bouskal, Brisbane resident. So I'm here again. Before any of us started hearing the term atmospheric rivers, I was concerned about dead and diseased and dangerous trees. And I've written letters to the school district, which they've responded by having numerous trees removed from the school district property. But I'm very concerned in our community, in the public right of ways and in our parks and at the schools. And it's been said that it's an act of God when trees come down. That's not true. If trees haven't been properly maintained, there's liability. If trees are dead and diseased, there's liability. So I believe it was the last council meeting, I made the statement that I put the city attorney on notice as to liability. So if you think the cost of removing dead and diseased and trees that haven't been properly maintained and recognized by a certified arborist as being those type of trees, the cost of removing the trees is nothing compared to the cost of the liability to the city if somebody lost their life. So I would request from the council that you direct the city to have all of our trees, including at the school districts, reviewed by a certified arborist. And if they're deemed to be dead or diseased or dangerous trees because of the lack of maintenance, that's the big thing. You know, you look at what happened on El Camino Real. So it's been said before that just because I say the sky is falling, doesn't mean the sky is falling. And I don't want to rehash the catastrophic loss to life of a mother and daughter in this community because of something that could have taken just a phone call to resolve the issue. I'm, again, having to say that this entire community is at risk and the liability of a lawsuit. So we need to look at our trees, at the eucalyptus trees especially. I mean, you look around town and, and have seen what's happened.
Please wrap up.
Pardon me?
Please wrap up.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Okay.
My name is Jesse Kerikas. Thank you for your presentation tonight. The one thing I kept thinking about during the presentation was it seems not feasible for people to go down to the hospital, to a clinic and get one box. I think there's probably about a thousand households in Brisbane, something like that. I would very much like to see a different sort of distribution because people, there is a stigma attached to it, you know? Like, if I have this, I mean, grandma could overdose on Vicodin, you know? Almost happened to my mom. You know, children who just find pills around. Anyway, I'd like to see some sort of better distribution from the county to the cities so, so that the city could really get into everybody's medicine cabinet like it was Band-Aids. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Come on.
Nancy Loxamana, Humboldt Road. I too want to thank you for coming. I too want to see the city push the county to get a very good supply of Narcan and get it into places here in our town, be at the library. And also, I mean, places of business that have people come in. I think it is at epidemic proportions. I think it's three out of five under twenty-five is death-related through
I think it's one out of five.
Pardon me?
One out of five.
One out of five? There's a sign on the freeway. I think it might even be a little more than one. But I think the whole point is it has to be more readily available. And I, I really, really, really appreciate the attention to this problem for the city, for all of our cities. And thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at oral communications? Okay, we'll now move on to the consent calendar. We have had a request from the public to pull items F and G. So we'll entertain a motion for C, D, E, H, and I.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham is absent. Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. I was hoping that member of the public would join us this evening, but I don't think that they are online and they're not here in person. So I think there's maybe some there would be some benefit to have a little bit of background from staff about what exactly these items are for. So, John, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, did you say item E? The minutes of the closed session?
Yeah.
That was F and G.
F and G. No, I said, I'll, I said F and G, but I said I'll make a motion for C, D, E, H, and I.
Okay, okay. I just misheard, so I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Both of these items by the state law, state law, planning law requires that the city submit an annual report, basically outlining our implementation of the housing element. So we have a housing element that was approved in 2015 that runs through 2023. So every year, the city has to report on how many units were built. Have we implemented the housing element policies, et cetera? So that's the item. G is that housing element annual report, same report you've seen every year in the past as well. And then the item H, I mean, item F, rather, is the overall general plan. And so again, it's the same sort of requirement. We send that to the state. We indicate what our policies are. Are we implementing those policies? We highlight any recent updates that we've implemented. And that's what the report is basically showing. We're not proposing, these aren't a vehicle to offer new policies or new language. All we're doing is reporting sort of retrospectively what we've done either in the last year or, you know, some of these, especially in the general plan are ongoing. So we just kind of note that they're going forward on a regular basis. But I know that some of the concerns in the correspondence related to policies we should have or, or other issues and, you know, certainly that's the council's purview, but it really is not part of this particular item to, you can't, the policies are what they are currently in the general plan. And if the city wants to change those, that's a whole separate process. We're just reporting on what the general plan says now and how we're implementing those programs or policies. I'd entertain any other questions you might have.
So to reaffirm suggestions on how we might enhance our general plan or housing element, those, those suggestions, what we're doing now is not implementing any changes, it's just giving a status report, just giving an update.
That's correct.
I discussed this with Clay and he said this is more of a looking backwards, not looking forwards. What have we already done? Not what we're planning for in the future. So any comments regarding how we might improve? This is not the, the time to make adjustments to either the general plan or the housing element. So with that clarification, I'll also see if there's anyone from the audience wishing to speak on either of these items. Okay, Paul?
Thank you. Paul Bouskal, Brisbane resident. So I just wasn't sure because there wasn't any information regarding the senior housing issue for the housing element. And I would hope that that could be included as to the need for senior housing in Brisbane and the site at the Twenty Three Club parking lot in particular. I believe should be, huh?
Oh, I was just going to respond to you.
Sure.
So what we're doing here is we're just giving the state a progress report. We're not amending anything. So any comments about how we might, you know, better identify sites would be when we would be at a different time. It wouldn't be, that's not what we're looking at right now.
I understood, but I thought it was that we were setting areas aside for housing. And I didn't see any senior housing included in that, what we were submitting to the state. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to
I'll make a motion to approve item F and G.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham is absent. Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
We'll now move on to staff reports. City managers report on upcoming activities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Got a couple of items of interest to provide an update to the council and to those who may be watching this meeting. Our committees have a couple of interesting items that the public may have an interest in. Monday, March twentieth, the Public Art Advisory Committee will review requests for proposal samples from other cities and begin framing key components of a public arts master plan, RFP for Brisbane. When they have a recommendation, that will come to the city council. The Open Space and Ecology Committee meeting next Wednesday, one of the items they will be discussing, discussing is recommending to the council a resolution of support for a state bill that would require CalPERS and CalSTRS to divest from fossil fuels. This may sound familiar as it was a repeat of a resolution that they recommended and the council approved last year, but was held up in State Legislative Committee. A reminder that on April sixth, the city council meeting, staff will be presenting the Complete Streets Safety Committee recommendation and guidelines for a proposed residential permit parking program for central Brisbane. And then finally, just a reminder to everyone that the draft Baylands specific plan prepared by the property owner, Baylands Development, Inc., has been made available to the city's website, brisbane.ca dot org slash Baylands. The draft specific plan is also a hard copy format at City Hall in the Brisbane Library. Want to continue to emphasize that this plan is the applicant's proposal, and the community will have an opportunity to weigh in on the plan and related environmental impact report through a public review process. As mentioned in last week's blast, and where the residents may have received a postcard in the mail, Baylands Development Team, again, Baylands Development Team, again, the private developer, is hosting a meeting at the community center this Saturday at one PM and another one virtually next Tuesday at six thirty PM. If you would like information on that, you can go to brisbane.ca dot org slash blast.
Thank you. So now we're at Mayor Council Matters. Um, so we're going to be adjusting how we report out on this, um, on this topic. So, uh, council members have requested to receive, um, the document that outlines all of the subcommittees that we've had in the packet. So that only includes the subcommittees that occurred in the week prior. So what we'll be doing is in order to do that, we will report out on the subcommittees you had not this week, but last week. And then at our next meeting, we'll report out the meetings you had the week prior. So if you look at the back of your packet, it has, um, from March third to March tenth, there were no council subcommittees unless you had a, um, a, a county subcommittee, feel free. And then you can see what the upcoming subcommittees are. Um, and then if you had any this week as well, you would report that out at the next meeting. Um, so does anyone have any, um, county meetings that they attended last week that they would like to report out on?
It was blissfully quiet.
Okay, none from you? Okay. So we will move on to written communications. Um, I did have written communications from Dana Dilworth. Would you like to read out the comprehensive list?
Um, we just have two correspondences from Dana Dilworth. Um, one about the general plan update and also, um, uh, for the housing element progress report.
And now we are at oral communications, number two. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Okay, Paul?
So Paul Buscale, Brisbane resident. Um, I'd like to know if it's three minutes or two minutes for oral communications.
It's, it's as I determine.
Oh, it's okay.
Yes.
So, uh, because I couldn't wrap it up, I wanted to also say about the issue with the trees. Most of us in the community are in our homes during these events. With the exception of Public Works, Police and Fire and other utility companies that come into this community to help us. So they're all at risk from being killed or injured and our equipment and other things being uh, impacted by falling trees. So, um, coming to these meetings and raising a concern and never being told that, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna have a, a meeting and we're gonna talk about that. And we're gonna make sure that our trees, all our trees are inspected. And not just on the public right of ways, but private property trees, as you could see what happened around the corner. Right around the corner, that huge eucalyptus tree that fell down. So when do we have any response from not only the council, but, um, the city engineer and arborist and others involved? You know, it's, it's not enough to come up here and, and raise a concern and, uh, just uh, say, okay, thank you for your input. When, when do you take action? Can you answer that?
No, it's not agendized.
Okay, can you agendize it? Can you put it on an agenda?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna commit to that right now.
That's typical. Can, can we, can we change the norm and, and have a response?
No, it's not agendized.
Okay, so you and the rest of the council unfortunately are liable if something does happen for not taking action. Inaction is, is bad. Do you understand that? Or maybe the city attorney could chime in.
Paul, why don't you give us a little time to bring?
I've, I've brought this up for years. I brought it up months ago. I brought it up at the last meeting.
Why don't you give us time to think about how we can address this? Cause tonight we can't respond to that, but we can work on it.
I am requesting that it's put on an agenda and all the people that are yay sayers are at that meeting. I mean, you realize you're liable, right? If something happens and you took no action?
Okay, Paul, your time is up.
Yeah, obviously my time's up. It's always up. That's all you wanna do is get past it. So I don't appreciate it and it doesn't serve this community.
Madam Mayor, and maybe I'll just be real quick and just help a little bit here. Uh, and I wanna assure anybody that's listening, we are paying attention to the trees that are in the public right of way. We had inspections in arborists and city staff, uh, reviewing a number of trees in the last few weeks, um, around town. Um, so it's, we're not blind to, um, potential safety issues and we are trying to take them very serious.
Thank you. I did speak to Public Works and, um, they had already told me about several trees that they had already identified were at risk of falling and were already making arrangements to have those addressed. So, and removing uh, cars and public access to those areas to prevent any injuries. Um, should that tree come down before it's able to be, um, taken down by a professional. Okay, so, C. Clark, is there anyone else virtually wishing to make a comment?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-seven.